Thank you. You heard the motion, counsel. Any opposed? Any in favor? All in favor. Any opposed? It's a vote. We'll now go to the city clerk. Tim Spanos will now swear in. Clerk-elect Allison Danforth.
You can, uh... Well, you want your family to come up too?
No.
Okay. So why don't you face them?
Why do we have to take my girl?
So they can take a picture. Okay?
Okay.
All right. So just repeat after me.
Repeat after me.
Aye.
Aye, Allison M. Danforth.
Okay. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully...
That I will faithfully...
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
And perform all duties.
And perform all duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As city clerk of the City of Peabody.
As city clerk of the City of Peabody.
For a term to commence on January 31st, 2020.
For a term to commence on January 31st, 2020.
Yep. Okay. According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution and laws of this Commonwealth.
Of the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the City of Peabody.
Of the City of Peabody.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And I do solemnly swear.
And I do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold and defend.
That I will uphold and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right. Got it.
I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to serve you. I look forward to it. I'm gonna miss my friend, Tim. But thank you very much.
Next item scheduled was Robert Lavassiere to come and speak before us. That is gonna be moved off until the next meeting due to family issues. So he'll be on the next meeting's agenda. We'll now move to hearings. For A. The clerk will read the notice.
Notice as hereby given that the city council of the City of Peabody, acting as the special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, January 9th, 2020, at 7:30 PM in the Frank O'Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass. On the application from Nutri LLC, 3 Bourbon Street, Peabody, Mass. For a special permit seeking to modify Special Permit 4-2019, requesting to modify the parking plan approved by said special permit at 23 Upton Street, Peabody, Mass. As filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.6, 6.1, and 15.7 of the Peabody zoning ordinance. Peabody City Council Councillor, Thomas J. Rozignol, City Council President.
Petitioner, please state his name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is John Kelty. I'm an attorney. I have offices at 40 Lowell Street in Peabody, Massachusetts, and I appear this evening for Nutri LLC at 23 Upton Street. We are here this evening seeking to modify a special permit that we were granted. At the time that we were granted that previous special permit, we were... We had submitted an Eastern Land Survey Plan that showed fewer spaces than our plan this evening shows. And we are mindful of some history of parking problems down in that area. And this plan provides us with more spaces than you previously had approved. And it also allows us to... As my client has purchased this property, but now as he goes in to make the renovations necessary for his food preparation business, we are able to assign spaces to our existing tenants. We have a detailer. We have an auto body shop. And we have a second automotive repair facility. And so now we will assign them particular spaces. Try to... We will have enough spaces for our employees. If you recall, we're in the business of healthy food preparation. There are people that are subscribers. There are deliveries on a... Several... Every several days of the food prepared. We currently have been preparing that food up at the restaurant in West Peabody, Tuscana. There was a time when we were able to rent kitchens from the Holiday Inn, which was undergoing renovation. And we were able to use their kitchens in order to prepare these foods. And now we want to move from there on to and out of Tuscana because they have a very healthy, ongoing business. And we want to do the food prep. If you recall, Councillor Mitsoulis, who isn't with us this evening but was here for the original grant, he was delighted to see that there were gonna be jobs. And several of his ward constituents are employees and are gonna be working on the food preparation right here. And there's a possibility that several and many of them could actually walk. So we're delighted to be in a position to begin this construction and renovation. And we're asking the city council to approve this parking plan. I have seen the commentary from the Public Services Department in which they've asked that we move one of our two driveways. We move it away from a utility pole and hydrant. And we're delighted to be able to do that. And then it also says we'll... We would be required to rebuild sidewalks out there. And so we'll meet with Public Services to determine which portions of the sidewalk need to be rebuilt. And we're happy to abide by that condition. So I think that's it in a nutshell. My client is Angelo Perina is here this evening. We're happy to answer any questions you may have. And with that, I would turn it back to the council.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the petitioner? Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? Anybody in the audience to speak in opposition of the petitioner? In opposition of the petitioner? Seeing none, Councillor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. As everyone knows, Councillor Mitsoulis is under the weather. And I was asked to help with this special permit in the role as a councillor. I'm gonna have to ask Councillor Attorney Kelty to be specific for me about parking spots. And so the council will know Upton Street is directly behind the Travel Leather Company. Is that up...
Directly adjacent to...
Adjacent.
Depending on your perspective. But it's adjacent over Upton. It's on the other side of Upton Street from Travel Leather. And it's accessed from Sewell? No.
Wallace?
Wallace. Wallace Street.
So if I come up Walnut, take a left on Wallace, it's on my right after...
It's the... It's the passageway is Upton Street immediately after Travel Leather.
Okay.
And then that building on the other side of the street is our building.
Okay. So Attorney Kelty, can you tell me what existing parking spots there were and what it is now... You're requesting, please?
The plan that we had filed dated September 25th... Oh, no. That's not us. Dated December 17th, 2018, which was filed with our original special permit request. That showed... That showed somewhere in the vicinity of 30 to 31 spaces. And we've now worked with the different... That was an Eastern Land Survey Plan. And we've now worked with a new engineer who's actually gonna be doing some of the architectural and interior work. And they've given us a plan that has given us 34 spaces, which are all located on our property, located in different positioning. Where total spaces provided are 34. And we're showing two handicap spaces. And none of them are located either on the sidewalk or there's a small alleyway behind this building. And currently, people park out there. But we're not utilizing any of that alleyway for any of our parking. We have 34 spaces immediately in that kind of courtyard area that is in front of these buildings.
Attorney Kelty, if you would. I can't get my bearings on where Wallace and where Upton Street is on this map.
So on the plan that I submitted with this application, Upton is located... If you see the area that says proposed driveway opening?
Yep.
So Upton... That is Upton Street.
Upton Street runs parallel to that.
At the lower portion of the plan. Wallace Street is located out where it says lot area.
To my left.
Forty thousand three hundred... Forty thousand thirty-three square feet. And the alleyway is behind where it says existing building. And we're not proposing any spaces out there. You see at the top of your page, you see an area that says way.
Yeah.
So that's that alleyway I was referencing. And so we're now locating all of our 34 spaces that are gonna be located right in that kind of central parking area. It's gonna take regrading. It's gonna take the removal of... There was a loading ramp that we no longer need. And nobody has used it for a number of years. So that'll all be torn out. And all of that will be regraded and repaved.
So, Jack, again, you're modifying it from 31 to 34, did you say?
Yes.
Okay.
But in the older... Actually, that alleyway was kind of included in the usage. In our conversations with people after the fact, I know that there's a general reluctance to use that alleyway out back. And we can now use this plan and assign our tenants. This is where you're gonna have to park. Because if you look at any of the aerial information that's on the record, you know, at the website, Peabody website and Google Maps, they park just everywhere. And there's no assigned parking.
I drive by there. It's the wild, wild west.
Yes. And that's what, you know, much of this is aimed at, is getting control of that. When my client gets in there, he wants it completely controlled. And he'll be able to do that because he owns the building, so.
Mr. President, I'd like to throw it out to my fellow councillors at this time. Thank you.
Any question from the council? Councillor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Attorney Kelty. Attorney Kelty, you mentioned the willingness to comply fully with the input from DPS. I'm just wondering how you do that? It looked like there's an existing entrance that's going to be maintained, and then a new entrance established. So are you now just gonna make a wider entrance? The issue that DPS highlighted was that it was too close to the fire hydrant and the utility pole. So that it appeared to me that you would have to bring the driveway closer to the existing driveway. So is there sufficient space there on that frontage to accommodate that?
I can narrow... If you look at the plan that I submitted this evening, there's a very wide proposed driveway opening on the left-ish. And that's two-way. The driveway that they're referring to is 15.8 feet. And we can narrow that to accommodate... Because it's a one-way driveway. So we can narrow that down to 12 feet.
I see. So it's staying in the location. You're just going to narrow it to accommodate the DPS request? Is that essentially what...
Counselor, it's actually not there. If you look at those lighter drawings beneath, you know, if you look at kind of... The existing condition is that's actually a loading ramp. That's all gonna be torn out. So we can make that new driveway as wide as need be. And so in this instance, we're gonna make it some four feet shorter, narrower than we were proposing. And that'll take us away from the hydrant and away from the... Right now, there's no driveway there.
Yeah, I understand there's no driveway there. But there is a driveway where the... Where it says the proposed driveway opening on the left. That driveway... There is a driveway there now.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And that'll be altered too.
So my point was, are you going to move the second driveway that's being established closer? And your answer to that is, I believe, no. You're just going to narrow it because you can. You don't need the width that was originally proposed.
Correct.
And that will satisfy the DPS requirement. Is that accurate?
Yes, that is accurate. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ah, Mr. President.
Councillor Charas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you... Mr. Kelty, how many residents live in the building? There's no one just...
It's entirely commercial.
So the tenants are just the commercial tenants?
That's correct.
Right? So there's no one upstairs?
No.
Okay. And am I correct is when I see 20 employees over two shifts?
That's for our business. That's correct.
Right. And that's only... The parking you're talking about is only for your business and your tenants?
Oh, in my application, I'm only referring to our needs. That's correct.
Right. Just those 20... 20 employees?
Yes. Yes.
So you're having 34 spots for 20 employees over two shifts?
Over two shifts. Because we have to accommodate the several existing tenants, one of whom only needs three spaces, another requires...
Yeah. Mr. Kelty, that's what I'm asking. All the tenants. How many tenants overall do you have besides your...
There are three tenants plus my client.
Okay. And how many parking spots are you delegating out for the three tenants?
I believe that we've determined that we only need two spaces for the detailer. And then we're allocating for the mechanical, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. And the auto body is getting another 4 or 5. Because some of those... Right now, it's our opinion that the auto body takes up most of the space because they have a tendency to bring a week's worth of work onto the site before it's even gonna be addressed. So we have to deal with that particular client in order to stop bringing jobs that will not be... Leaving them in the parking lot and then not getting to that job until, you know, three or four days later. So they're gonna have to organize themselves in a fashion that will allow them to bring the jobs... Bring the cars onto the site more in accordance with when the work is actually be done. And there'll be no... No unworked-upon cars on the premises.
Through the President, how many bays does that shop have?
It's interesting that the detailer has two areas in which... But they're not organized like ordinary car auto body repair. Or there are two bays that are for the auto body repair people. But then with respect to the mechanic, he doesn't have genuine bays. But he's only got two as well, so. So the... If the question is, how many people are being worked upon at a given time on the site? It may be as few as seven. But when you go down there, I mean, they've got, you know, 14 and 15 cars that they've just parked there, waiting to be worked on. So Angelo's goal is to, you know, put an end to that.
And just having my own vehicle worked on and timeframe, I know vehicles sit at lots because once they start looking at them, the appraisal from the insurance isn't adequate. They have to have another look at. So vehicles do hang out at the body shops for a while. So I'm a little interested in how to... How you're gonna change that and limit how many spots is there already. But I think that's a matter of the landlord and not this committee. So I'm just more curious and seeing how you were going to do that just to fit into your plan that you... And I know the owner is the landlord, so I know he's gonna be able to do it.
Yeah, just by way of information, my personal information, I've represented off and on for years, Tanta City Auto. And they have a very small space. But they are not parked all over Walnut Street because Jason does a very good job of telling you what we're gonna need, you know, and your car is on the site and it's being worked on almost immediately. And they just don't take the cars on the premises for an extended period of time.
Now, I'm only concerned... I'm only concerned because I'm sure Councillor Mitsoulis wouldn't want those cars to start being parked on the street because they're not in the lot.
He doesn't.
So it's that.
I think that Councillor Mitsoulis may have been the councillor that moved for no parking on our particular side of the street. Travel Leather, they are allowed to park on that side. But there's no parking on... There's signs everywhere on our side of the street. And Angelo, it's his intention to, you know, enforce that and make the place work.
And my last question is, Council President, do we have any communications from Councillor Mitsoulis on his opinion of this special permit?
No.
Did speak with him today. And I offered to... And I'm not trying to, you know, hearsay. But I did speak to him today. And I did offer, if he felt appropriate, to continue this matter till he was back. And he said he had seen the memorandums. And he didn't think it was particularly... Well, I'm not gonna say what he said. But he suggested that if I wanted to go forward, it would be fine to go forward. And that Councillor Gould would help shepherd it.
Councillor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jack, on the map, number 23 is the auto body side of the building? So if you go up... If you go up from Walnut, up Wallace, it's that brick building that's on the other corner from Travel Leather. And that's the... Their tenants?
It is all one building.
It's all one building. That's the Wallace.
And we're in that building. But you're correct that from the Wallace Street side, there is a garage door, and they can get in on that side.
Jack, I gotta be honest. I'm not opposed to this. But we have the opportunity now for... I don't know the gentleman's last name. I'm gonna refer to him as Angelo. Is that what you said?
Angelo Perina. They own Tuscana's Restaurant in West Peabody.
And he is buying this property?
Has bought it.
Has bought it. Here's an opportunity for Angelo to help out and really rein in that condition of that building on the corner of Wallace and Upton. Because it is... There's cars everywhere. And they're coming and going. They're stacked in the driveway. They're stacked in the open doorways. They're parked up Wallace Street. It's an opportunity to really... I'd like to see some commitment from him that he will take charge of that.
He is committed to that. And part of the reason is because his business is food preparation. And that building, I mean, drive by there today, I'm not positive of the way that building looks and the way everything is around there. I'm not sure. I want to be dealing with food preparation in its current context. So yes, Angelo is very committed to the notion of retrofitting that completely and making it a much more appropriate and pristine place.
Can... Do you mind if your client comes forward just for... Please?
This is Angelo Perina.
Mr. Perina, if you could just state your name and your address for the record, please.
I'm Angelo Perina. And I operate out of 3 Bourbon Street in Peabody, Mass.
And I can speak for most of the council. We love your food.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Keep up the good work. Can you help us get organized down there on Upton and Wallace? Because it's a disaster right now.
I know. That's our goal. I mean, 100%. That's gonna be the big challenge with this place. We know that. That's why this parking plan that we have, we think fits the most number of spots on that lot. I mean, that's... The space that we have to deal with is this space. And that's why we reworked the plan. Because we thought the last plan didn't have... It showed 31 spots. But if you looked really in detail, some of them were really tough to get into. This shows all the spots really usable. And where you can actually wrap all the way around it, it offers us the best opportunity to fix what's going on there.
Are they a long-term tenant, the auto body business?
They've... I've been working with them. So I heard the comment earlier about, you know, dealing with insurance adjusters and stuff like that with an auto body. And I just had my car worked on too. And it took... Same situation. But this particular tenant deals with dealerships where they send like dings and dents there. And they work them quick and send them out. So that's why you have so many like... They're unorganized. That's why they have a lot of cars there, because they're doing a lot of volume. But they're working with the dealerships. I actually talked to one of the dealerships with the auto body to say, listen, you can't just store your cars here, you know? You need to bring them here, get them worked on, and get them out. So he's aware that this is a problem. If we need... We don't want to replace him because he spent a lot of money in that place. And he does a good business, and he's busy, you know? But we're working with him to reduce the cars. But right now, there's nobody there regulating it. It's just a free-for-all, you know? It's Tanta. Every time I go there, it's, you know... I get, you know, stressed out just being there. But we need to get there and get it under control.
I feel better having spoken to you. And you've made a huge investment in the city. And for that, we thank you. And I have no further questions, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just... What are the other two businesses? So I have the auto body, and I have your restaurant establishment or food establishment.
So there's a detailer, an auto body, and a mechanic?
Okay. So just a very quick question, and I don't know the answer. Maybe I'll ask Councillor Gould. I hate to put you on the spot. There's two handicap spots for four businesses. Is there an ordinance? I know you're on the Disabilities Commission. I'm just not sure. Is there an ordinance that requires how many handicap spots? Is there an ordinance that requires how many handicap spots in a specific lot?
There is, and I can't quote what it is, but I think two for four is certainly adequate, but I'm not sure of the regulation.
And I'll defer if, to Council Kelty, if you have a different answer, or do you?
No, I don't, I don't have a terribly different answer, but the number of handicap spaces required for retail uses is significantly higher. So our engineer felt that the two handicap spaces was adequate for our commercial uses inasmuch as there's no walk-in trade, there's no retail component, nor is there even to Angelo's business. That's not, you can't buy directly, drive in, buy food from this facility. It's all by subscription, et cetera.
Okay, that was my next question. So thank you very much.
I just have a couple of questions. Did you, did this plan already go through site review?
Oh, we have been to you previously, and we have now come here, and we're not making, unless the repaving of the parking lot triggers site plan review, we're not building an addition or anything that's going to trigger site plan review.
The reason for my question is, is the only question I have about this, because I actually do think that this will tame down the Wild Wild West. I happened to be down there today, and it was crazy. But anyway, the one question I have is where that new entrance is going to be. There's a, probably a six-foot wall there currently. So you're going to be taking down that wall, and that's now going to be a second egress into the parking lot. So you're going to have this L-shaped wall, I'm assuming, where it says number two.
Yep.
So now, will you be able to park on Upton Street where it's, where that cutout is? Is my first question.
I believe that that is.
Is, mark, no parking.
Okay, excellent. And then the other question is where they're taking down that wall, and it's a substantial wall. Like I said, it's probably about somewhere between four and six feet. And how does that change the grade to get from Upton up into that parking area on that particular driveway opening?
So that's a, that is a significant slope over there, but that's an exit only. You're not entering there, you're only going out there. But it is a significant grade, that's why there's this little cutout here to help reduce that grade. It's significant, but it's not.
Insurmountable.
Yes, it's not insurmountable.
So if you look in the former plans, the wall goes all the way to where it says 25.67?
That's right.
And now your wall is stopping right at the end of the driveway where it says number two, correct?
Yep.
So the rest of that slope, is that just going to be grade?
Yes, yes, exactly.
Okay, okay. All right, I just wanted to get clarification on the.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions from any councilors? Seeing none, Council Gould.
Move to close the public hearing, Mr. President. Mr. President, move to approve the application from Nutray LLC, 3 Bourbon Street, Peabody, for a special permit seeking to modify special permit number 4-2019, requesting to modify the parking plan approved by said special permit at 23 Upton Street in accordance with sections 4-2-6-6.1 and 15.7 of the Peabody zoning ordinance. So moved.
You heard the motion. On the motion, Councilman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Council Gould, Council Gould, with respect to the DPS input, could we add that as a condition? They've already said that their intent is to comply. So the condition would be that they would comply with Department of Public Services requests with respect to driveway location and sidewalk establishment.
Motion by Councilman McGinn to add to that. So moved.
Any further, any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilors Welton.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozicknell.
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to nothing, one absent.
Q. Counselors? Thank you. With the council's indulgence, I'd like to go out of order and accept a late communication.
Mr. President, move to accept a late communication from his honor, the mayor, regarding the appointment of Diane Full, 12 Sherman Street, Peabody, Mass., for the position of city treasurer. The term to expire, it's one year, so 1/6/2021.
You heard the motion to accept late communication. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Ms. O'Donnell.
Good evening, and thank you. I'm Beth O'Donnell, Director of Human Resources, here before you tonight on behalf of Mayor Bettencourt, as he had a conflict this evening. Thank you for accepting this late communication from his honor, the mayor, seeking approval of his appointment for the position of treasurer. The mayor and our team apologized for this late communication, but we felt it was important and necessary to bring before you tonight in order to keep our finance team really moving forward in the beginning of this new calendar year. We were very fortunate to receive dozens of applicants for the position of treasurer, which became vacant when Julie Daigle took over as the executive director of the Peabody Area Chamber of Commerce. And I'd like to thank Julie for her continued assistance in the treasurer's office as we worked to hire for this position. We put together a selection team, including Mike Gingras, our finance director, Mary Martin, the city auditor, Chris Morpheus, the city collector, and Mayor Bettencourt, and myself. While it has taken us several months to get to this point, I'm excited to present Diane R. Full to you, and we respectfully request that you approve her appointment as the treasurer of the city of Peabody. Ms. Full is a longtime resident of Peabody. She has extensive municipal finance experience, having worked for the city of Salem in a variety of finance team roles for almost 20 years. Her experience in accounting and auditing, along with three years spent in the role of assistant treasurer for the city of Salem, make her uniquely qualified for the role of treasurer. She holds a bachelor of science degree in business administration with a concentration in accounting. With the holidays over the past few weeks, we feel very fortunate that Ms. Full has been exceptionally accommodating and able to join us here at City Hall to start her transition into the office and begin working with us this week. You have Ms. Full's resume before you for your review and consideration, and Ms. Full is here tonight to introduce herself and to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Diane Full. I thank you for hearing me today. I know it was a late, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous, but I appreciate you listening to me tonight and accepting me as your treasurer. I've been here since Monday, everything has been wonderful, everybody's very helpful, and I hope to continue with your approval.
Thank you. Councilman Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and welcome, Ms. Full. I'm very impressed with your resume, and you've got municipal experience in a city treasurer's office in Sister City of Salem. And your, your extensive resume is impressive, and it's your background, and it seems like a perfect fit. So welcome, and I'm happy to support your, you in that position. Welcome to Peabody.
Thank you.
Councilor Gould.
Thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Full. Congratulations. Your background speaks for yourself, so don't be nervous. I'm sure you'll do wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Diane, as I said to you when I heard about this, I was thrilled. I think you're a perfect fit for it. You have the municipal background, understand, you know Peabody very well, and you know this area really well. And I am very excited. It's one of those moments where you see two, a person in a position kind of come together, and you think this is really going to work out for the citizens of Peabody. So congratulations and welcome aboard. Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Councilman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've known Ms. Full for many years. We've had kids in school together. I can tell you from firsthand experience, she is a very hard worker in any capacity that I've ever observed. Again, she's a fine person, and I think the city's lucky to have her based on her background, and I will enthusiastically support this appointment. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Pete.
Councilman Manning Martin.
And lastly, I would be remiss if I didn't commend Ms. O'Donnell and the HR department, because as of late, the caliber of individuals that, and the process by which you're going through to ensure that we have highly qualified individuals is impressive, and I appreciate the work that you're doing. And thank you for bringing such qualified candidates forward to, you know, move the city forward and make sure that we get things right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the appointment of Diane R. Full, 12 Sherman Street, Peabody, Mass., 01960, to the position of city treasurer for a one-year term to expire January 6, 2021. So moved.
You heard the motion? Any questions? Roll call, vote.
Counselors Welton.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozicknell.
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to nothing, one absent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you all.
We'll now move to item 4B.
Council, Council President, I'd like to move to a, to accept late communications for withdrawal of the application. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. We'll now move to 4C. The clerk will read the notice.
Notice is here by giving that the city council of the city of Peabody acting as a special permit granting authority will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, January 9, 2020, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Weggan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass., on the application from Capone's Restaurant, 147 Summit Street, number 4, Peabody, Mass., for a special permit seeking to replace an electronic message board sign which will be affixed to an existing freestanding sign at said 147 Summit Street, Peabody, Mass. as filed in accordance with sections 6.1, 11.4.8, and 15.7 of the Peabody zoning ordinance. Peabody City Council Councillor, Thomas J. Rozicknell, City Council President.
Welcome. If you could state your name and your address for the record.
Hi, good evening, thank you. My name's Christopher Pichoni. My family operates and owns Capone's Restaurant at 147 Summit Street, Peabody.
If you could just give a brief description of what you're trying to do at that location.
Thank you. Yes, we're just basically want to replace our existing electronic message center. We've had that one for about 11 years. It's starting to fail, a lot of repairs, it's out of warranty, so we're basically just looking to replace that with a new one.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the petitioner? Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? Anybody in the audience to speak in opposition? In opposition? Seeing none. Councilor Welton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselors, I had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Pichoni earlier this week. Just want to confirm, as he mentioned, it's just the billboard, excuse me, the display board within the sign structure, the sign structure itself is not changing. The dimensions are very similar to what they currently are. I think it's about a foot more narrow and a foot longer. So there's really no change there. And additionally, we talked to Mr. Pichoni about allowing the city to use the electronic display in case of emergency, and he was happy to agree to that as well. So really, I don't see anything different with the opportunity to switch up the display board. Looked pretty straightforward to myself.
Any questions from the council? Councilman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the closest residents to here are on Christina Drive, which is Ward 2. I would agree with Councilor Welton that this is largely a replacement for what's there now, so I don't, I don't see any adverse impact on any of the closest residents. So I intend to support the, the application. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman McGinn. Counselor Sharris.
Yeah, just on the other side, just probably as close as, as Ward 2 is Ward 4, as we all want, 4, 2, and 1, it's actually comes together right there. And I'm certainly going to support this, because I think it's a time that these businesses having these electronic signs, they're all becoming the, the end of their lifetime. And it seems like we're having a couple coming at, throughout the last pass, past months. And I think it's important for to, you know, keep these signs looking good, you know, renewed. So I'm certainly going to support that, because you could, you could just keep it fading and not looking as nice as it could be. So I'm certainly going to support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Councilor Welton.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just would like to add as well, Mr. Pichoni also clarified that the electronic display will just be used to promote his business, you know, upcoming acts, things like that, that Capone's will be hosting, just to put anyone at ease for any outside advertising.
Excellent, thank you. Councilor Welton.
Motion to close public hearing.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Welton.
Motion to approve, excuse me. Motion to approve application from Capone's Restaurant, 147 Summit Street, Peabody, Massachusetts, for a special permit seeking to replace an electronic message board sign which will be affixed to an existing freestanding sign at said 147 Summit Street, Peabody, Mass. as filed in accordance with section 6.1, 11.4.8, and 15.7 of the Peabody zoning ordinance.
You heard the motion? Any questions? Roll call, vote.
Counselors Welton.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Melville.
He's left.
Oh, he left. McGinn.
Yes.
Rozicknell.
Yes.
Motion carries 9 to nothing, 2 absent.
Thank you for the council, thank you. And I hope you like us as much as Tuscana.
Next item on the agenda is item 4D. The clerk will read the notice.
Notice is here by giving that the city council of the city of Peabody acting as the special permit granting authority will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, January 9, 2020, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Weggan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass., on the application from McDonald's Corporation, 133 Main Street, Peabody, Mass., for a special permit seeking to replace the existing two menu boards with three digital menu board signs at said 133 Main Street, Peabody, Mass. as filed in accordance with section 6.1, 11.4.8, and 15.7 of the Peabody zoning ordinance. Peabody City Council Councillor, Thomas J. Rozicknell, City Council President.
Thank you. If you could just state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Tracy Diehl, and D-I-E-H-L, and my address is 6487 Hilliard Drive, Canal Winchester, Ohio, 43110.
Could you just state what you're looking to do at that facility on Main Street?
Okay. McDonald's Corporation has engaged in the past year in their energy-efficient menu board renovation project. So all across the nation, their menu boards are being replaced. The existing menu board is obsolete and no longer reparable or no longer changeable. In other words, the menus, the paper menus that are in there are no longer being produced. So they embarked on this energy-efficient way of replacing menu boards by going digital, and that reduces waste in the landfills, and it also becomes energy-efficient because the existing menu board. the existing menu boards are fluorescent. The proposed change is for a menu board that is less than half of the size of the existing menu board, so it provides for an overall reduction of sign area. The existing site has what we call a tandem drive-through. There are two menu boards that are side by side, and those menu boards would be removed, and the new menu boards would be placed exactly in the same location or directly adjacent to the footing of the existing menu board. When the concrete cures, the new menu board would be installed after the footing had time to cure, and then old menu boards will be pulled out. The old menu boards can no longer exist, so at some point, we will have a problem, which creates a hardship to the business and a hardship to the particular franchise owner because they would no longer be able to represent their menu items, and this is an existing approved use. These are existing menu boards. The proposed menu boards are not brighter than what's in place. They're the same brightness, if not dimmer, no more bright than what a Kindle is or a telephone, a cellphone. The proposed menu boards don't emit sound, and they are fully programmable and dimmable, and they're not intended to attract business to the property. They're only intended for viewing of the members that are in the drive-through already. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about the menu boards themselves.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the petitioner? In favor? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none? Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been in contact with the applicant's representative, Ms. Diehl. Counselors, you'll see departmental response in your package from the collector's office. As of this morning, the applicant owed $2,643.83 in personal property taxes. That situation was remedied today. I have a late communication from the collector, which is email from Christian Amorphous, dated January 9, 2020, indicating that those taxes have been paid and are now current, which I'll give to the clerk. And suspension of rules, move to receive.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
With that out of the way, as you heard from the applicant, these signs in total are a reduction of about 40 square feet of signage from what is on-site today. The signs are more efficient and may actually improve the function of the drive-through, which I see as beneficial to potential interference with traffic on Main Street. So in that regard, I see it as an improvement. The signs are not really visible from off-site, as the applicant indicated in an overview. It's really not intended to generate or promote business for passersby. It's more simply to facilitate ordering through the drive-through. So as they aren't visible from off the property, they really present no adverse impact to any of the butters. So I'm supportive of this application, and at this point, I welcome comments from other counselors. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. Any comments from the council? Counselor S.
Thank you. I just had a question, just going forward with technology and everything. Well, now, where you go to the drive-through now, and there's a printed menu, has the prices, as we go forward with this technology on these digital boards, will actually be a situation where overnight, basically per se, you can change the prices need be upon promotions and things of that nature? Just curious.
Price changes are typically something that's done at a corporate level, and there's a process that they go through, but essentially, if the prices were to change, it would be the blink of an eye. But that's not actually their intention with the technology. Their intention with the technology is, like Councilmember McGinn mentioned, is to keep people moving through the drive-through as quickly as possible to reduce vehicle emissions. When people stack in the drive-through and vehicles sit idle, that continues to put emissions out into the environment. Not all vehicles are equipped with auto shut-off yet, and some people, when they do have auto shut-off, disable it. So when vehicles are sitting in the drive-through, that's bad for the environment. By getting vehicles to move through the drive-through swiftly, this technology offers suggested selling items at peak times that are faster, that are faster to prepare. They offer items that are only available, so you should be in a situation where you're in the drive-through, and it should not be a case where, "I want to order this, and it's on the menu, and it's not available." The technology is now there for them to have that item off of the menu when it's not available. So between suggestive selling and offering items that are readily available and faster to prepare, and offering a menu image that is clear, concise, crisp, and visibly appealing, it can get people to make their decisions quicker, hopefully, and move through. Believe it or not, not everyone goes to McDonald's knowing what they want.
Having two teenagers, I understand that. No, thank you for your answer. I appreciate that.
Any other questions? Seeing none? Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to close public hearing.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the application from McDonald's Corporation, 133 Main Street, PBD Mass., for a special permit seeking to replace the existing two menu board signs with three digital menu board signs at said 133 Main Street, PBD Mass., as filed in accordance with Sections 6.1, 11.4.8, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. So moved.
You heard the motion by Counselor McGinn. Roll call vote.
Counselors Welton.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignal.
Yes.
Motion carries, 9 to nothing, 2 absent.
We'll now move from reports in committee, because there are none, to motions, orders, and resolutions. Counselor Welton.
Nothing to report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Sasla.
Thank you, Council President. Motion to receive item 8B. Suspension of rules.
Motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Motion receive, under suspension of rules, motion receive item 8E, and request that the clerk send a copy of this letter to Sunshine Taxi. So moved.
You heard the motion. On the motion, Counselor Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Counsel Sasla, would you also like that Matt referred to taxi and limousines?
If that's the will, I know they've been in the city for a number of years. We haven't received a complaint. I did reach out to the business owner to let them know. They actually were out of town, but if you'd like to bring them before the council, you certainly can. It's not a, I haven't seen this a habit, or a, you know, there's a lot of conjecture here and things of that nature. I mean, quite frankly, you know, if I go through the letter, it talks about there should be a flat rate. I mean, literally, the person who wrote the letter could have just said, "How much, can I ask you how much it costs to go from, you know, point A to point B?" They could have asked that, so I thought there was a little bit of hearsay, a little bit of, you know, I appreciated the letter, but I thought, as I said, if it was a patent, I would. I'm comfortable with it, if you like, but quite frankly, I just think a copy of it to them pretty much will set the tone. I will reach out to them next week when they get back from being out of town and just let them know that if it happens again, I would expect to them to be called before the city council. But I'm comfortable with it. If you're not, you know, that's, you know.
No, and if I may, Mr. Chairman, no. Thank you. I note now that you are the Chair of Taxi and Limousines. I just noted that now with the changes this year. So my apologies, and thank you for getting out front on it. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Also, under, oh, yeah.
All in favor? There was a motion on the floor, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Sasla.
Yes, under suspension of rules, motion receive item 9B, and set up a hearing.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Council President. And lastly, we all, I think everyone gets a copy of The Beacon, which is the publication of the Massachusetts Municipal Association, and there was an article in there that I put on everyone's desk on page 11. And the article talked about social media concerns and strategies and the transition from engagement to interaction. And this has been on my mind for a number of reasons. I think as a city, we've just had to scratch the surface with using social media. We use it more from a public relations point of view, and I know that there are many, probably three or four, social media sites on Facebook where there is interaction, and a lot of it is repetitive, but more importantly, nothing of it is from official tone. And what this article talks about is the fact that our citizens, our constituents, this is how they're reaching out. This is how they're asking for information. They're not necessarily picking up the phone anymore. They don't even necessarily want to go to the website and report a pothole, or go to the website and report a pothole. We have, we've on the face pa, on the homepage of our website, it talks about if you have a snow emergency or a snow pile issue. So what I like to do is, I'm unfortunately going to be out of town, and I won't be available for the next meeting, but what I'd like to do is, I'm going to reach out to the administration and talk to them about maybe having some point people, having them. I like to engage with the administration about talking about how we can do a better job as a city to use social media to answer some of the questions that come up literally on a daily basis. And I do chair the Municipal Safety Committee, which is responsible for police, fire, traffic, license permits, and all of the matters relating to public safety. So I wanted to bring this up, because I'm also looking for input from anybody on the committee, any councils. As I said, we all, I think, have probably a lot of opinions, but more importantly, the most important thing is, how do we engage with the citizens and the residents of PBD and get their answers to their questions resolved, and let them know that they're being heard? As I said, this is a whole new avenue, but as this article talks about, there's some towns that have engaged, and they've gone forward with it, and I think we're ready. I think it's just a matter of to have that discussion and decide, you know, how this could be done in an effective manner. So I'd like to make a motion to send to the Municipal Safety Committee to discuss social media and the transition from engagement to interaction. So moved.
On the motion, Counselor Shress.
Yes, thank you. I'm wondering if this should have some input from the legal committee, because it's policy and ordinances and answering questions that, you know, I'm just, I'm wondering if that would be a committee that should have some input also, just because of the legal parts of it and the answers that would be given out and that. Just throwing that out.
Counselor Sasla.
Through the chair, to Counsel Shress, I think that's a valid point. I think, as I said, I'm going to be reaching out to the mayor himself, and I'm going to be asking him to look at some of his team members, who he thinks should be certain point persons for certain subject matter, and I think it, and I think, quite frankly, you bring up a good point. I think legal should have some, should and will have some input on this. I just don't want to bog it down, but I agree with you. I'd like to have them, I'd like to ask the mayor to engage with his, with the city solicitor regarding this, but I think that, I think that's fine. I think that should be a part of the conversation, but I'd like to keep it in my committee, if possible. No objections.
Just, and the one other information that may be helpful for you, Counselor Sasla, is that about 18 months ago, approximately, Tim, we had the State here, they gave a lecture on social media and stuff. I'm not sure if we have any material still on that. They talked about engaging into that as counselors, and it's the open meeting law part of it, too. So if you, if you, if the counselor so wishes to receive that information from you, it might be helpful for him to, for his committee on this discussion, because I think there was a lot of information in there that we learned. So, thank you.
On the motion, Counselor Sasla, would you be willing to hold off on the motion until you have those conversations first?
I certainly can. I was, I was looking to, so today is January 9 or 10. I was hoping between now and, I was expecting between now and February 27, I would be able to have those, so that's why I was not really in a rush, but I think to try and get the ball moving. But if you want to go to March, I can, if, you know.
My thought on that was, have the discussions, and through that discussion, you might have a better sense of where to, which subcommittee to put it into. You happen to be a member of both legal and safety, so through those discussions with the mayor, you might be able to come up with an agreeable subcommittee that would be appropriate.
That, I think that sounds like a fair request, so what I'll do is, I'll engage with the mayor and his administration, and when I get back in the first meeting September, excuse me, February, we'll figure out where it should go. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Any further motions?
Nothing further.
Counselor Gould.
No motions, Mr. President, but I'd like to schedule, if I could, Allison, Industrial Community Development, please. There's a few things on there that we still have to address, whenever you can. Thank you.
Counselor Welton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, I apologize for the oversight. I'd like to move to receive item 8C, special permit application filed by James Greco, 160 Lynn Street, regarding special permit application, and move to schedule for hearing.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Council President. Under suspension of rules, I'd like to make a motion to move to accept 8F and set up a special permit application hearing. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you. On, I'd like, under suspension of the rules, move to accept 10B and adopt for ordinance Chapter 6. Then needs a vote.
So moved. You heard the motion? We'll have a roll call vote on that.
Counselors Welton.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignal.
Yes.
Motion carries, 9 to nothing, 2 absent.
Counselor Shress.
Just a little bit, I would like to ask council to request JRM to come in in front of the council and give a little explanation of why continuously his trucks are picking up prior to 7:00 AM. I've been having discussion, had discussion this week, again, with JRM. I understand their point, but I think they really need to come in, and I think we really need to kind of get a hold of this. It's happening too many times, and the same answer I'm hearing, and I have a feeling that this may be happening with other vendors also, but people shouldn't have to hear dumpsters being dumped at 2, 4, 5 o'clock in the morning.
Would you like to put that in public service?
Yes, that'd be great. Thank you. And I'd also like to make a-
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Shress.
Thank you. I'd also like to make a motion. I heard some residents from Hog Hill and up in Brooksby about trying to come out, especially on Hog Hill onto Lowell Street, that it's very dangerous from that to try to take a left-hand turn. I'd like to ask Captain Richards to look at that location, if they would be able to, I know we all don't want another signal, but maybe another, some sort of a sensor for a signal for cars to turn left. Also, if you can look at that and come back with a recommendation. On top of that, several years ago, I made a motion, and it was agreed and supported, that a crosswalk signal would be at that location also, and what's happening is that we're having a lot of people come down from those two neighborhoods, trying to get over to the bike path, and there is no crosswalk, and that's an area that speed is continuing to go. So I did ask for a pedestrian light, solar light, that they could press so it could stop the traffic, so people can go across carefully and also with a crosswalk there. So if we can, at the same time, ask for recommendations on that and an input, maybe it can be done all simultaneously. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you. And lastly, I'd like just to make a comment or point of reference is that the letter that a request I made-
letter, the request I made, a motion of the DPW, get a list from the school department of all the bus stops that's in the city for elementary, high school, and middle school, and given to the DPS drivers, and also, the most important was the subcontractors, so they know where the bus stops are, and they're not piling snow on top of that particular spot. That list is also posted on the school website, so people can look at the website on the school side to see where those parking spots, those pickup spots are, and ask if the residents see that location, if it wasn't cleared or had been cleared and now piled back up for some particular reason. If they're able themselves to clear, that'd be great. If not, to notify DPW director, so we can get people out there to clean those spots, so the kids are safely standing for the bus stops and not in the streets. And that's just a point of reference. Thank you.
Counselor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks to Counselor Saslaw, he called my attention to 8D, which is referenced in a late communication from Attorney Von Zelitis requesting us to move the special permit hearing scheduled for January 23rd to February 27th. So moved.
Motion to receive. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Receive item 8D.
Thank you.
And set up a public hearing on that date, February 27th.
Thank you.
All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
All set, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under suspension of the rules, motion to receive Communication 8A from Rob Lowell, the branch executive director of the Trudy Jean Family YMCA, regarding a thank-you letter he sent for the city council's donation from the Drug Education and Awareness Committee. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselman Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd also like to request scheduling a Human Services Committee meeting, preferably before the next meeting, if it's available, for at least, definitely, the subject matter would be House Bill H-1565 and House Bill H-1566. Those were acts relative to health care proxy that resident Mr. Howard Caris had worked on with the legislature, and I'd like to invite him to come and present on that. And another item may be veteran services issues as well. Thank you.
On the motion, Counselor Shearace. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselman Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I also would like to make a motion to, I usually make an annual motion to release all executive session minutes that are no, the need for them to remain in executive session no longer exists. However, I'd like, this year, instead, to first get a list of all outstanding executive session minutes, complete with the dates of the meetings, the subject matter of the meetings, and the reason they are still outstanding, and we can take it from there. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
No further motions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Chaco.
Just one motion, Mr. President. Move to receive and adopt as advertised item 10A, handicapped ordinance for 13 Lincoln Road.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
No further motions.
Counselor O'Neal.
Thank you, President. Rozigal, no motions tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Shearace.
I'm sorry, it seems to be a little bit of a pattern, but I'd like to make a motion to set up a subcommittee meeting, the joint of city council and school committee. So moved. If we can do that, even on, especially on an off night, will probably be best. They do, Tim, they do have school committee meetings on Tuesday, so if you want to communicate with them, but any other off night would be great. Thank you.
I'm just curious, the subject matter, was there anything particular off time?
I believe there's a couple of subject matters that's been hanging there. Ones that have been come up is on, Counselor Welton, what was it?
School start time was--
School start time, redistricting conversation.
And redistrict.
Volunteerism on how we go about that. Thank you.
All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. No motions. Would you like me to take you through 9A?
Please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Moving to 9A, move to approve taxi driver's license, John Kimball, license 48, Derek Lane, license 49, Robert Roost, license 50, Robert Flattery, license 51, and Alec Olson, license 52. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Counselman Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the clerk, can we just confirm that all of these and the following renewals and/or transfers, all the renewals that are coming up, entertainment license, general licenses in Class 1 and 2, that the city collector, Mr. Morpheus, has communicated that there are no prior to this evening, that there are no outstanding taxes or issues with all of these that are listed this evening?
Yes. Everything that's on the agenda is for these licenses have all been cleared by the city collector. There's nothing outstanding.
And that is done with an inquiry from you to him, and then he gets back to you, and then you follow up any outstanding?
Yes.
And then, once they're cleared up, then you allow them to come forward for renewal, correct?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions on the motions? Seeing none? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 9C, move to approve Class 1 Motive Vehicle License, 2020 renewal, flagship motorcars, commercial vans, 202 Newbury Street, Tesla Motive, Mass. Inc., 210 Andover Street. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 9D, move to approve Class 2 Motive Vehicle License, 2020 renewal, Auto Transporters of New England, 55 Iowa Linfield Street, DNR Auto, 100 Bernie Streets, Number 6, JRM Auto Sales, 80 Newbury Street, RNA Automotive, Inc., 26 Lake Street, Saco Auto Repair, 119 to 121 Lynn Street, Tri-City Services, 55 Iowa Walnut Street, Peterson's Automotive, Inc., 114 Newbury Street. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed?
Counsel, just one correction on Peterson's Automotive. That's a Class 3 license, counselor. So, that was just listed under Class 2, but that's a Class 3.
So, we'll amend the motion for that last one for Class 3.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 9E, entertainment licenses, 2020 renewal, Alto Forno, 41 Cross Street, Buddhist Tavern, 144 to 146 Washington Street, DNR Roadhouse Pub, 55 Pulaski Street, Gallinero Pizza, 89 Main Street, Kelly Square Pub, 2135 Washington Street, Outback Steakhouse, 300 Andover Street, Polana Restaurant, 9R, Sylvan Street, Portuguese American War Veterans Post, 1103 Tremont Street, Red's Kitchen and Tavern, 131 Newbury Street, Stonewood Tavern, 139 Linfield Street, Sylvan Street Grill, 112 Sylvan Street, and Zewu's Asian Cuisine, 5 Central Street. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 9F, general licenses, 2020 renewal, limousine, Michael's Limousine, 161 Lynn Street, limousine roadhouse, limousine 55 Pulaski Street, limousine Tri-City Services, 55 Iowa Walnut Street, tax cab, American Taxi, 92 Jackson Street, Salem Tax Cab, Salem Taxi, Salem Taxi Company, 35 Rainbow Terrace, Salem, tax cab, Tri-City Services, 55 Iowa Walnut Street, tax cab, Witch City Taxi, 14 Mason Street, Salem. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 9G, taxi cab license transfer, Tri-City, 55 Iowa Walnut Street. So moved.[1782.82]